I don't know.
What's it say?
There's no.
It says Ronina.
Okay. Perfect. Good evening, it's 6:00 PM, October 16th, 2019. I'd like to open the zoning board of appeals meeting for this evening. Also like to announce that this meeting is being televised live on local Mashpee TV. Next, if we could all rise, we'll say the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next, does anyone have a public comment regarding anything not related to any agenda items tonight? If so, please sign in with Mary Ann. You can have two minutes to make a comment. Okay, it looks like there's no public comments. Okay, board members, Bill Blaze Dell and associate Sharon Singalier are absent tonight. So sitting on tonight's first hearing will be our four regular board members as well as Jim. George, would you please read our first two continued hearings?
413 Nathan Ellis Highway Route 151. Petitioner Industrial Development Corporation Incorporated requests a special permit under section 174-24 and 174-25E1 to allow for construction of a 9,975 square foot retail use commercial building together with accessory parking on property located in C-2 zoning district map 72 parcel 1, parcel 56A Mashpee, Massachusetts. Owner of record, Robert A. Lebohal Family Trust, 1980, continued from September 11th, 2019, hearings at the request of the attorney. 413 Nathan Ellis Highway Route 151. Petitioner Industrial Development Group Incorporated requests variance relief under section 174-31, front yard setback 75 feet from paper road. Section 174-31 FN dot 14 natural state buffer. Section 174-37 location of parking. Section 174-272 B2C and section 174-82A4 use of dry wells. Section 174-41M landscaping within parking area and section 174-40 accessway separation, possibly to allow construction, allow for construction of a 9,975 five-foot square, square foot retail use building together with accessory parking on property located in a C-2 zoning district. Map 72 parcel 56A Mashpee, Massachusetts. Owner of record, Robert A. Lebohal Family Trust, 1980, continued from September 11th, 2019, hearings at the request of the attorney.
Okay, we just received a letter from the Dollar Store. Would you read it, Scott?
Sure. This is from the Law Office of Dunning Coran McNichols Garner, October 7th, 2019, to Jonathan D. Furbish Chairman Mashpee Zoning Book Heals, 16 Grand Avenue, Mashpee, Mass. 02649. Regarding industrial development, dear Chairman Furbish, as you know, an issue was raised at the most recent public hearing that additional variance relief could be required to move this project forward. An argument can be made that the footnote 16 to section 174-31 raised by the board would not apply given that the fact that the Wampanoag Avenue is either, is neither an existing or proposed street, given the redivision of lots, which has occurred over the years, between what is today Route 151 and Sisaskas Road, and also taking into account the development, both residential and commercial, which has occurred beside and behind the subject matter lot. Alternatively, an argument can certainly be made to support variance relief because of the uniqueness of the circumstance and given the impact of this so-called street upon development of the lot, given all the other restrictive bylaw criteria adopted long after the creation of this lot by way of an amended subdivision plan, Plan Number 11380N, being a redivision of lots shown on Plan Number 11380F, dating back to 1967 where Wampanoag Avenue was effectively abandoned by making it part of lots 2160, 2161, 2092, and 2093. The plans have been attached. Page 2. This being said, taking into account the number of variants that may be needed to develop the site as proposed, together with the unfortunate neighborhood opposition to the project, my clients have decided to formally request to withdraw their pending applications. My clients remain convinced that they would have developed this long vacant commercial site in a manner that would have been an asset rather than a detriment to the town and thank the board for all its understanding and attention to the request. Very truly yours, Kevin M. Corain.
Okay, seeing that the Dollar Store has withdrawn the application, will not take any more testimony on this hearing. And the application for the Dollar Store is now closed. Ron, would you make? Ron, would you make a motion to accept the withdrawal letters?
So I'd like to make a motion that we accept the letter of October 7th, 2019, to Jonathan D. Furbish Chairman of Zoning Board of Appeals, drafted by and signed by Kevin M. Corain, thus requesting that the Dollar Store application be, I want to make sure of this one. I want to make sure. I'd like to add that motion that we formally accept the withdrawal request of the applicant, specifically Kevin M. Corain's letter.
Okay, we're going to do it for both. So we will need it for the special permit. And we will need it for the variance relief. So let's vote on the special permit. So do I have a second?
Yeah, good.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I would like to make another motion in reference to the, so that was for the special permit?
Correct.
I'd like to make a motion in reference to the applicant of 413 Nathan Ellis Highway, Industrial Development Groups, request for seven variances, I think it is, am I correct? Kevin, was there seven? Do I need a?
I don't see it.
Okay, well, may you want to read this? Want me to read it, Mr. Chairman?
Well, yeah, just read the numbers.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion that we accept the applicant's withdrawal of the following variance relief. 174-31 front yard setback of 75 feet from paper road. 174-73 FN dot 14 natural state buffer. 174-37 location parking. 174-27 dot 2 dot B2 open print, C closed print, and 174-82A4 use of dry wells. 174-41 open print M closed print landscaping within parking area and 174-40 accessway separation, possibly allow for construction of a 9,975 square foot retail use building. And I see that as the all of variances. I believe that's all the applicant's variance as of today. My intention is to include all those variances that the applicant has requested. And I referenced specifically a letter dated October 7th, 2019, to Jonathan D. Furbish Chairman, Zoning Board of Appeals, asking this board to formally request, formally take under its advisement withdrawal for the, all those applications and the variances, signed by the applicant's attorney, Kevin M. Corain.
I assume these were being made, requested without prejudice?
Yes. Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. That settles that. Anything to sign?
You can play along.
There you go.
All right. Do you want to copy?
I have that letter from Kevin.
Can I take this copy?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Ron? Do you want to copy?
Right, still. Did you do that?
There you go. Jonathan?
Too much. Okay, George, I'm going to have you sit on this next hearing. I'll have Jim sit out on it. So George, would you read the first new hearing?
800 Falmouth Road, Unit 101C. Petitioner Robert V. Catania requests a special permit under section 174-2516 Table of Regulations and section 174-24K of the zoning bylaws to allow for a marijuana manufacturing facility located in an I-1 zoning district, map 88 parcel 2 Mashpee, Massachusetts. Owner of record, Kevin B. Andrade, trustee of Summerfield Park Reality Trust.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yes.
I just ate at his restaurant, am I in conflict at all? I don't feel okay, I mean, he wasn't there. We all probably eat once in a while.
I think we've all eaten there.
All right, so, okay, I just want to make sure. I'm just looking, I'm saying, geez.
Did you pay?
I did. I paid.
Then you're good.
I actually had some points. I just want everybody to know that.
Do you want to pass these?
Okay.
Hi.
Hi.
And for the record, you are?
I'm Robert Catania.
Okay. And let us know what you'd like to do, if you would.
So for the record, I'm Greg Surinian. I'm Robert's architect. So we had tonight seeking a special permit for the use for marijuana manufacturing facility in an I-1 use. It's pretty straightforward. Robert can answer questions regarding the facility. And I can answer questions regarding anything that relates to the building and the building codes.
Okay, so what exactly do you want to do? You're not going to grow anything, is that correct?
That is correct. We're going to be only buying from licensed approved marijuana growers and following the CCC Cannabis Control Commission regulations of transportation and everything that, we have to get approved by the state as well, which is a very in-depth process. And we will bring the product in, do extractions, extracting the oil out of the plant material. And then we'll be making different products with that, basically, at this point.
Edibles, I assume?
There'll be some edibles, nothing like, looks like gummies or lollipops or anything like that. But obviously, we're following the regulations of the Cannabis Control Commission, everything we do. They're extremely strict. So you have to photograph, very sophisticated video system, which I already reviewed with the town police chief. And he was quite, from his words, impressed by it, is what he told me. But it, basically, you have to bring everything in on camera, record it. Paperwork has to be sent ahead of time from the grower, you know, an email document and how much you're sending, the amount of it. I have to bring it in under video camera, receive it, enter it into the state software system immediately, within 24 hours. So it's all highly controlled and regulated, very intense security system with video cameras and everything else that the state has set forth on. And again, the state does a lot of the police for you, they're incredibly strict on this. And then we sell these products, we're creating a package brand that we will put these into with a brand name, and then we will pack them up and ship them wholesale to retailers. So there'll be no customers coming in, we'll only be delivering material, raw material product in, supplies, and finished retail products out to stores. And that's it. So just be employees there.
How does the product move in and out?
In turn, by shipment, you mean?
Yeah.
It's, we're going to start out with our own vehicle, approved state vehicle, which they inspect with a cage in it that locks and drivers that have to be followed and certain regulations, and they'll bring the products in and out. Eventually, there might be transportation companies that handle it for us.
Okay, and it goes to, I assume, approved?
Yes.
Retail vendors?
Yeah.
Is that what you call it?
Approved retail marijuana store, only in the state of Massachusetts, we can't cross state lines.
Okay, so there's one already in Mashpee now?
Yes, they have, they're medical right now, they're waiting, I think, I don't know the details, but I believe they're awaiting state, a final approval to open for retail. So we'll be selling to retail, not medical. There's two different licenses in the state, medical versus recreational, I'm sorry. I used the wrong word.
Okay.
So recreational is what will be licensed initially. So we can only sell to recreational stores, not to medical stores yet.
So anywhere in Massachusetts?
Correct, correct.
Is there anybody else that does what you're doing?
Oh, yes.
Already does it right now?
Oh, yes. There's already licensed approved in the state already. A lot of the medical dispensaries had to start under what's called a vertical system. So they had to grow their own products, they had to manufacture it, and they had to retail it all within their same window, door, rather. And a lot of those were the first to get approved for recreational. So some of them have already converted to recreational. There's just not too many around here. The only one around here that's recreational and open right now is Cure Life, I believe, is in Wareham, I think it's in Wareham. They're the only one on the Cape right now. This, P-Town has about four approved by the town, that's awaiting state approval. The state process takes six to nine months right now, if all is right and goes well. So we're, you know, we're at about month four of uploading our paperwork to the state, which is a lengthy process.
Okay. What you're doing now, you said there's other people that are already doing it?
In the state.
Have they applied or they're actually?
Oh, no, they're, no, they're opening now and selling product. Every recreational store that has any kind of an edible or oil extraction had to purchase that or produce that themselves under recreational license approved by the CCC within the state. So there, any store you see open now has those products in them right now in the state. There's 24 stores open right now, I believe.
Okay, have you got feedback from the state of any issues that they're having at these locations, such as the one you're proposing to open?
No, I mean, not that I'm aware of. I mean, I don't, I'm not privy to their internal application process because, you know, I wouldn't have access to that. I only know when they've applied by the state public listing and when they get approved. I don't, they don't, I don't have access to their, you know, what took them to get there or not get there, who got refused, really. So I only know what's on the public records of the CCC.
Yeah, I don't know if any issues that they might have.
Yes, so this design plan, I presume, I'll ask the question. Who helped you to design it? See, as though, I presume it's your first time you've designed one.
Well, it's.
I mean, how do you use it? Is there a state criteria that says that you need, you know, so much of an extracting machine? It's got to be a certain size and, you know, who did that?
Well. So, well, I can speak to that. So Rob did sort of a rough draft. There are some guidelines and regulations that we follow. So we took his sketch and turned it into a real plan. Based upon, he picked out equipment, so that equipment is real equipment from the manufacturer that also comes with specifications for divisions and clearances. There are some codes involved, National Fire Protection has some codes that we follow that sort of defines some of the space requirements for areas, as well as segregation. So there's a lot.
The reason why I'm asking, and I think I probably should have prefaced it by saying, with our building inspector here, I presume that this is going to be an interior refit, probably nothing very much good at all going on the exterior.
Correct.
99% is going to be interior. I guess the question that I need to ask, or I'm asking is, so we have a plan in front of us, this is what we'd be acting on, if in fact it changes and you don't have, you know, an extraction machine, maybe it's five times as big as that, or this substantially changes. I don't know if this board would ask you to come back or not. And I just don't know if in fact you've got enough information to design this to make sure that our vote?
Yeah.
If it's in favor, would be, would be in a position that you're not going to have to alter this in a very large way.
So, I mean, I could be wrong, but I think we're here for the use, not necessarily.
I agree, okay. Can I stand corrected? Because that, that was the thing I had in my, in my mind to begin with, is what are you, what are you actually?
Right, in most cases, I'm usually here presenting a case for?
Right.
Relief from something. This is a use requirement.
Just use?
Just use.
Didn't realize that.
I stand corrected.
I think it all falls inside the footprint of the unit these right now.
Yeah, we included this, just for, so you can understand the process and what's in the building.
Right, but we're not, so we're not actually, the fact that you included these floor plans and what's in these plans?
No, it's not.
Really has no bearing on us.
Correct.
Just the fact, and I, this is a question, just the fact that whether we as a board feel that they meet the criteria to put this in this, in this town at this location. Am I correct?
It really comes down to page 20.
Okay.
Right in the book.
Because I was.
Special permit use.
I was, well.
And if you go to number 2, it kind of spells out what we need to look at on any special permit.
But if you read Evan's email.
We're going to get to that.
It just, for me.
This gives you an overview of what we should be thinking about when we're issuing a special permit.
Yeah, I get that. Yeah, we've read that 100 times.
Yeah, absolutely. And what it, what it says is, will not adversely affect public health or safety, will not cause excessive demand on community facilities, will not significantly decrease surface or groundwater quality or air control, will not have a significant adverse impact on wildlife habitat, estuary systems, traffic flow, traffic safety, waterways, fisheries, public land, and neighboring properties. Excessive levels of noise. So we got two we could focus on, neighboring properties, excessive levels of noise, vibration, electrical maintenance, disturbance, excuse me.
So that being said.
The rest of it is, really does not apply.
What does an extraction machine do? Does it vibrate?
No, it.
Because we're in a new, we're in a new world here, right? We might find out this thing is, I mean.
No, this is, these are commercially produced machines that are sold all over the world for this purpose. It's just using ethanol, food-grade ethanol to extract it. And we're dealing with the codes and the, with the fire and building inspectors on all those details at this point. But these are machines that, you know, you go to trade shows and you view and you talk to the people and they do demos for you online and.
So I guess, is there anything in here that you're aware of that will make any type of noise?
No.
Not outside the building.
No. It's very quiet. I mean, it's just, it's just, it's literally a vacuum closed system that just quietly pumps the alcohol through the material and filters it and goes back and forth in there. It's, it's really, it's no noisier than a small pump.
Do you have any waste? How about, how about exhaust waste?
There is going to be an exhaust system, it has to have a hood with a filter. And again, that's regulated by the state in terms of, you know, to prevent smells.
How could that affect neighbors? If at all?
If it was not designed properly. But again, given, so given, also, I would say, given, you know, given the, the use and the capacity that he is doing, it's very small. If you look at some facilities that are being built, you know, they're huge and they have 10 times what he's doing.
There's a bunch of people sitting around the fan.
Yeah. Well, those are the ones that, you know, could have, but his is very small. It's not like it's spewing the odors, it's all done on a vacuum system and contained, so.
Right.
There's really very little.
Does the state inspect it regularly? Does the state have to come inspect it regularly?
Yes, the state and the town.
So that's, you know, it's like any other business that has to have things regulated.
As most of you know, I've opened a lot of restaurants and the exhaust hood equipment system in the restaurant is about 100 times noisier than what this is going to be.
Kind of say the same.
Yeah. And.
And capacity, I mean.
I mean, the amount of airflow over a grill in a restaurant is way beyond what this is going to be, you know, and smokier.
Do you have adequate? Do you have adequate off-street parking? How many employees do you have?
We'll be starting out with between six and 10 employees. And there's about 70, how many spaces are there?
I forget, but I don't, I think, I think the way the park works.
I'm familiar with the building, there's a lot of parking out back too.
It's like 100 and some.
It's the old Cape Cod rehab.
Yeah.
And think of how many people going in and out of there.
Yes.
They have the two levels, they have to walk out in the back.
Oh, okay.
Remember Cape Cod rehab?
I would, I would, yeah, I didn't do the analysis, but I bet if we did do the analysis on a square foot basis for what's required by zoning, his needs would be under that.
Yeah, I would bet your Cape Cod rehab had at least 10 employees, and then not to mention all the.
Guests.
People coming in and out of there.
But there's also other tenants in there, again, it's all shared, so there's other tenants in there that probably have minimal. It's a huge parking lot, right down where the doors, you were talking about the back, there's quite a big parking lot there, then the upper one and then the middle. So it's, there's a lot of parking there.
Personally, I don't think that's.
Are we in agreement that there'd be enough parking?
I, I, I know.
Also, you know, we had gone through.
This picture's here.
Yeah.
I know the building.
Yeah, but it's a huge parking lot out back too.
It was also reviewed by a lot of the town officials when we went through the host community grant process, you know, the.
We're going to read that.
Yeah. They reviewed it.
What about hours of operation?
It'll be primarily days, I mean, we don't have an exact schedule yet, but it's going to be mostly Monday through Friday daytime.
It's not a 24, I mean, I don't know what the town says as far as operation, could they run 24 hours if they're allowed to?
We have no intention of running 24 hours.
I'm not sure what the town says.
Is it their hours of operation in the town of Mashpee, I'm pretty sure?
Yes, they're, I'm sure they're.
For, you know, businesses.
Except excessive noises, I don't think. Restaurants are seven days a week, day and night.
Yeah, but I'm, so like a construction business, I thought you had no later than starting at like 7:00 and stopping.
But that's outside.
That's because of noise.
They're inside, that's what I'm not, that's what I'm asking. If they wanted to, could they run 24 hours a day? There's so much demand that you'd need to, I don't know if it's, I don't know if it's even.
Do you have, do you anticipate ever operating this, this facility longer than 7:00 in the morning, 5:00 at night, six days a week?
I mean, I mean, it's possible if we're gearing up a big order, we could stay open a couple hours later, but there's no noise outside or anything. So I mean, you know, we would certainly not be doing this till like late at night or in the middle of the night, but.
I don't know if we could even vote on it, I just don't know what the town bylaws are.
I'm not sure it's really relevant to any issues.
We have a right to conditions.
Well, that's why, that's why I was bringing it up, to see if this should be conditioned.
Then you got Jeff Rollin that's over there, I mean, he's working probably late nights to get ready for certain, we've had no issues with that.
I mean, there's, yeah.
He's probably going to make a lot more noise than you.
That's a much bigger fan than we're even.
Put it out there.
Yeah, no, I guess.
Yeah, and the receiving and shipping, that's probably all regulated by the state.
Highly.
I would assume.
Highly regulated.
Security, I assume is regulated by the state and then approved by chief.
And again, the chief already reviewed it as well, but the state has the most say in how that has to work.
And does that be conditioned on that can't be retail, or is that already?
It's already.
It's our part of it.
We're not approved to do retail.
Okay. I don't have to be conditioned.
This stuff is very highly regulated.
My correct. Extremely.
Jim?
Yeah, is this a steam extraction?
No, it's, it's done with ethanol, actually.
Okay, and what do you do with your waste leaves?
The way that's regulated is after we extract all the ethanol back out of it, we have to take it outside and denature it with sand or dirt, is the way, CCC regulates how you handle this, you have to denature it, and then it'll be stored there, locked up in a bin or something until a farmer relationship we have comes and takes it for compost.
So all these procedures are regulated?
Absolutely. We have to do a whole detail to the state of the whole process of what we do, the equipment we use, who we're hiring.
And they must, just like board of health of the restaurant, they must come down regularly and.
Yes.
See, just probably unannounced and say, let's see what they're doing. Maybe, I don't know.
I don't know if it's announced or unannounced, to tell you the truth, I'm not even sure.
But it's all gonna be state-regulated. We're just, this is just, we're not changing use of the business.
Any other questions?
I'm good.
George?
Nope, I'm good.
Jim, no. Scott?
Nope, I got my answers.
Ron, no questions?
Yeah, I just, not having any questions, I'm fine. I just don't know what's in our purview and what's, you know, it's kind of gray in my mind as far as...
Well, it's, it's a use of the building, it's just a change of use, and this is a state-regulated thing, we know nothing about it.
I, I, I'm not aware of any problems. It's just, it's a type of use that could end up being a twenty-four hour use, and, which is fine, I still don't care about that. But we just wanna make sure it doesn't negatively impact someone else if he chooses to go twenty-four hours. But again, I don't think he would.
Well, to be honest with the, the noise and things that you're concerned about are written into some of the town other departments. I believe the Board of Health is, was that, I think the Board of Health was checking with me on the noise, Charlie, correct? On the smell and noise?
Well, we, we also have, Sony bylaws one seventy-four twenty-five, page one, any trade industry or other use that is not just offensive or hazardous by reason of vibration, noise, or emission of odors, dust, gas, fume. So we can regulate that if, if that's...
So Charlie, here's my question, just one member. So if we were to approve this variant, this special permit, all these conditions that pertain to time or noise, because they're in the special permit decision-making anyway, would you have the authority as a building inspector, if in fact they worked and created noise and did various things, and someone complained to you, could you then, under the existing rules and regulations, deal with it?
Yes, I could.
Sounds good to me.
Okay, we've got a letter here from the town planner, and also we have some plan review committee notes. So I'm gonna read these in. I will read the town planner. Scott, would you like to read?
I got it. I got the notes. Do you want to go first?
Uh, sure. Okay, uh, this is from town planner Evan Lira, and it's a memorandum and it's dated October tenth, two thousand nineteen, and it's myself, Chairman, Zoning Board of Appeals. Reference CCECAT LLC application dash public hearing ten sixteen, two thousand nineteen. The Board of Appeals, at the two, at the ten sixteen, two thousand nineteen public hearing, will be presented with an application by the CCECAT LLC dot, CCECAT LLC is seeking a special permit to operate a recreational cannabis product manufacturing facility. I'm writing to address some questions that were brought to me with regard to the regulation of this industry. Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter ninety-four G, MGL C ninety-four G, is the statute that provides the regulations governing the use and distribution of marijuana not medically prescribed. Under the statutes, marijuana cultivation and marijuana product manufacturing are completely independent of each other. To operate a marijuana establishment defined as a retailer, manufacturer, cultivator, or laboratory testing facility, an applicant must first enter into a host community agreement with the town of Mashpee for each proposed use and obtain provisional licensure from the Cannabis Control Commission for each use. See the definitions below from MGL C ninety-four G, number one. Manufacturer is to compound, blend, extract, infuse, or otherwise make or prepare a marijuana product. Marijuana manner, product manufacturing is an entity licensed to obtain, manufacture, process, and package marijuana and marijuana products, to deliver marijuana and marijuana products to marijuana establishments, and to transfer marijuana and marijuana products to other marijuana establishments, but not to consumers. Okay, a marijuana cultivator is an entity licensed to cultivate, process, and package marijuana, to deliver marijuana to marijuana establishments, and to transfer marijuana to other marijuana establishments, but not to consumers. The host community agreement with the town reads, quote, whereas company wishes to locate a licensed marijuana product manufacturing establishment in the town at eight hundred Falmouth Road, Unit one oh one C and Unit B one C, assessors map eighty-eight slash two slash one oh one C and eighty-eight slash two slash B one C, here and after the establishment, in accordance with Chapter fifty-five of the Acts of twenty seventeen, the Act GLC ninety-four G and regulations... Thank you. Promulgated by the Cannabis Control Commission, CCC, pursuant thereto and such approvals as may be issued by the town in accordance with the zoning bylaw and other applicable bylaws and regulations as such may be amended. Further, the state regulations on marijuana establishments is quite precipitive with regard to security. The host community agreement with Mashpee also deals with security measures in Section eleven point one, eleven, excuse me. I have attached the host community agreement for your review. In short, if the Board of Appeals grants this special permit, CCECAT LLC could not expand into cultivation or any other use under the statutes without a first, without first amending its host community agreement with Mashpee and licenses from the Cannabis Control Commission for each use. So that's the bottom line. They cannot grow it, they can't do anything but what we're talking about right here.
Marijuana product.
Exactly. So Scott, you've got some notes from the Plan Review Committee and some of the questions that they asked. So can we read those in?
This is to the Zoning Board of Appeals from the Plan Review Committee dated October third regarding eight hundred Falmouth Road, summary of minutes. Committee reviewed the proposed project for eight hundred Falmouth Road and is submitting the following comments to the ZVA. Glenn Harrington, Board of Health agent, submitted his list of specific questions to the applicant and was discussed by the committee members earlier in the meeting. Drew McManus, Conservation Agent, no comments. Scott Carline, Chief of Police, met with the applicant and was satisfied with his proposal and will address any future concerns at that time. Catherine Laurent, DPW Director, reviewed the parking requirements and would like the applicant to address the private road issue with the association. Charlie Maintanis from the building, the building inspector, discussed his concerns with the applicant regarding the possibility of a sprinkler system in the building. Tom Rulo, Fire Chief, requested a copy of an email so he can submit that to the state. He would like to meet with the applicant at a future date with the state and to include the Building Department at that meeting. He requested a fire protection engineer's report and discussed that the NFPA thirty-eight has not been accepted by the town at this present time. Evan Lira, Town Planner, met with the applicant and requested a recorded decision. A motion was made to recommend that the ZVA approve the modifications to the special permit and that the applicant continues to meet with the Building Department and Fire Chief to discuss any code-related issues that will impact the issuance of the building permit. This motion is specific to the permit, the building, and to the use of the code-related issues that dealt with, which are being still discussed.
Okay, so where does the applicant, applicant address the private road issues with the association? What does that stand for?
Um, I'm a little unclear on that when we got it to myself. I had explained to her the parking, just much like I did here, and she seemed okay with it. So I don't really know what I'm supposed to really look at at this point. I don't, I mean, it...
So there's an association there, right? Must be all the businesses in this particular park? Is that correct?
Well, that's off Industrial Road and...
Well, I'm just reading what it says here.
I know, is that a private road? That's, I'm at, is Industrial Road a private road?
I don't know, I'm not aware of being a private road, that's why I was confused by it all.
We've had businesses on Industrial Road get approved, you know, buildings going up and all that, I've never heard that come up as a private road.
There's many businesses back in the industrial park, this is...
Yeah, I'm in there. I've never heard that from, Charlie?
It, it is the, it is a private road, and this concern comes up whether or not the private road is being maintained, not necessarily the parking lot.
Is it a private road 'cause it hasn't been, because it hasn't been accepted by the town because it's a subdivision road?
I'm not sure of the reason, but there were...
Because there's a lot of businesses in there. I mean, this, this issue, I've not heard come up in reference to any of the businesses in there.
It, it's been mentioned a couple times in the past.
Huh. So what...
Yeah, I know, we've had a lot of these, you know, contract abays go up in there, different things, and this is the first of them coming up.
Yeah, he's, it's also an existing space that he's leasing, it's not, it's not like it's a new property.
It would seem it wouldn't be, question mark, our hunt. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I agree with you.
Yeah, I mean, it's...
I don't see how it's relevant to our, our condition.
I think we make, I think we make reference to it maybe in a motion, that we read this letter and it's part of the motion, but how he deals with it would be, in my opinion, is one member, his business.
Makes sense.
Because he's already, the, the, the Plan Review Committee's recommended approval of the special permit.
Are you asking me a question?
No, I'm just making a statement, but am I incorrect in anything that I've said to you, you think?
Well, I'm not sure it falls under the purview of special permit. I agree with you.
Yeah, yeah, and it's an existing property, all he's doing is, is, is asking for a use of that, within that building, that's existed there for years, which, I don't know, month, two months ago was occupied by someone else. It just doesn't, it doesn't seem to be within our jurisdiction as one member. Scott, what do you think on that?
I agree. I mean, even conditional upon all these comments.
Exactly, that's what, that's what my thought was.
We're just approving the use of the business in that space. I mean, that's out of, out of our realm.
Jim?
I agree.
George?
I agree.
Charlie, what is the possibility of a sprinkler system in the buildings?
We actually are going to have a meeting possibly Friday and subsequent meetings after that to look at the actual system and determine whether or not just that section of the building needs sprinklers or, or the whole building needs sprinklers. And I have some opinions on that, but those are code issues, not, not use issues, right?
Does the state require the Cannabis Commission that oversees all this, do they require any sprinkler systems for this type of equipment?
Oh, no, this is Mass General Law.
Yeah, this is all building code.
This is building, I didn't know if there was anything that they require you because of...
No, this, so, part, part of this is, you know, we've had, we had a, you know, fight opponent, Charlie, we've all been involved, I have some code experts involved. It's not a clear cut, because this is so new. So we've been working together cooperatively to make sure that we're all doing the right thing, and that's sort of what this is...
Well, my question is whether it was a marijuana manufacturing facility or some other type of business with the same...
No, this is, yeah, this is strictly out of the building code, and there's nothing in the state statute.
So this doesn't matter what type of business you were putting in the UV check of, yeah.
We have a different definition of use than you do in the building code and depending on the use and square foot and a bunch of other...
Okay.
Conditions, will determine whether or not, so this is all code.
That's all building code issues.
Nothing to do with the, uh...
So if this special permit were to be granted and someone were to make a motion, and the motion included the fact that this was included in this special permit, just as a part of that special permit, then that would probably deal with any questions that may arouse out of this. Because you're gonna cover it anyway, because the only way you're gonna...
They're not gonna give a permit.
Satisfy you.
I don't think it's a...
That's probably overkill.
Yeah, I don't think it's an issue for you to necessarily have to discuss, your use is different than...
Your concerns are different than our concerns.
And that's why this...
Gotcha. Okay, I'm good.
Okay, the last thing, Tom Rulo, Fire Chief, requested a copy of an email. Has he got that?
Yes, he got it.
Okay. Any further questions before we make a motion?
By me?
Ron? Oh, anybody in the audience have any comment? Come right up if you would. Let's see if we can get you a mic, we can...
Anybody?
Hand over the mic and, uh, your name and address, just for the record.
Lisa Peachey, one sixty Algonquin. And my husband Dean back here and I own Budget Blinds and we're tenants at eight hundred Falmouth Road. Just happened to be here because of the Dollar Store, and here you are. And so we both just wanna say, we support you guys, and we don't, personally, we don't have any issues. We'd love to see another business come in, and we think, you know, already you have a great restaurant, and so we think you do a great job and be a good neighbor, and we have no issues.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Come right up.
Hi, Sharon DiFrancesco, eighty Situate Road. I, too, happen to be here tonight, and I'm happy to be here tonight to welcome you guys. I, I was listening as closely as I could, but I wasn't sure if you could just clarify, please, exactly what would be extracted? Is it just CBD oil, or is it any additional substance? Thank you.
Um, it's actually the essential oil of the plant. We're extracting the full spectrum of the essential oils of the plant. Whatever is in there for cannabinoids, arterpens, and flavonoids would all be part of the extraction process.
Okay. Anyone else?
Hello? So I'm the aforementioned husband, Dean Peachey, from one sixty Algonquin Road, also tenant in the same eight hundred Falmouth Road. And I've investigated the marijuana industry for a series of conventions that I was promoting. And so I have a pretty good idea of the process that is gonna be going on there, and I could not see that it would create any hazard or any problem at all. It's just, it's a small, light manufacturing business. It's, it's what that area is zoned for. So I, and that's why I support it, because it's just a regular business. So, welcome. Good luck.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Why don't we just like to make a motion?
I would love to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion that we issue a special permit to Robert V. Catania at one at eight hundred Falmouth Road, Unit one oh one C, under Section one seventy-four dash twenty-five, Open Print sixteen, Closed Print, Table of Use Regulations, and one seventy-four dash twenty-four period K, zoning bylaws allow for marijuana manufacturing facility located in I-one zoning district, map eighty-eight parcel two, Mashpee, Mass. Owner of record, Kevin Peandrade, trustee of Summerfield Park Realty Trust, with the following conditions. Number one, board has determined the applicant meets all the conditions of a special permit under Mass General Laws forty-eight, Section nine. Site plan, Summerfield Park, one inch equals thirty feet, dated February twenty-sixth, nineteen eighty-five. All Cape survey consultants depicting location facility, Building C, Unit one oh one. New floor plans, ResCom Architectural Inc., one eighteen Waterhouse Road, Born Mass Project, eight hundred Falmouth Road, Unit C one oh one. Owner, CCECAT LLC, thirty-five South Street, Mashpee, Mass. Date of issue, eight twenty-six nineteen, drawn by MRH, checked by GBS, drawing number A one dot zero. New lower level floor plan, two thousand one hundred fifty square feet. New first floor plan, nine hundred and eighty square feet. Existing floor plans, EX one period zero. Condition, all town board comments written on the record specifically, including but not limited to the Plan Review Committee correspondence dated October third, two thousand and nineteen.
All in favor?
So, sorry, could, could we just make one comment? So when the, when the petition was filed, we thought we were filing for a special permit. When we met with the boards, we found out there was already a special permit in place. So their recommendation was to modify the special permit. I don't know if that makes a difference on your...
Is there a special permit in...
Oh, at that location?
Yes.
We just wanted to make sure we were clear, that it's just a modification of the existing special...
We just wanted to make sure we were clear that it's just a modification of the existing special permit. They recommended it on the bottom of that.
Depends on how it's advertised, number one. Number two, Charlie, help me with this. Each business in a situation like this potentially needs their own special permit? Depending on what they're putting in there?
Originally, Industrial Drive, um, was required to go through the ZBA for special permits. And consequently, there would be modifications to that special permit. Later on, it was the planning board that handled the special permits for I-1 district. So because it originally was a special permit through the ZBA, uh, it was felt that the modification, uh, it should be a modification request through the ZBA from the, from the original special permit.
Who felt that, Charlie?
Uh, it was, uh, the town planner and my department.
Okay, all right.
So is this read correctly?
I'd have to reread the motion, my concern is the application.
I don't know the answer to that. Mary Ann, do you?
I'm thinking that there, if it's advertised, like, I have a copy, I just issued the copy of the special permit, the original special permit-
Yeah.
After it was advertised, so it's really, I would say that you could, you know, modify it, it's a minor-
Correct me if I'm wrong, though, wouldn't we have to do two things? Wouldn't we first have to find that it's either a minor or a major? And we might want to find that it's major, but, but issue it. Right? Wouldn't we have to find whether it's minor or ma- do we have to find minor or ma-
This was, this was advertised as a public hearing, right?
This is the original special permit, right? You guys get this? Date on that is when, 85?
Date on this is, yes, May 3rd, 1985.
Yeah, that's what this is.
But this special, I mean, this special permit is very, 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 very minimal.
Well, it's written.
Yeah, no, I agree, I, I'm not questioning anybody then. So the, the big three things were the requests of the chiefs of police fire are satisfied, fire department is satisfied. And the second one is, is bond set, the amount of 50,000 finished roads and conditions. All conditions, design review are, have been met and that's the conditions of the special permit. So I'm just saying-
There have been a number of special permit modifications regarding this property in the past.
Do you envision any problems with either the state, specifically the state, or the town if you just get a modification and not your own special permit?
I, I mean, I don't see why you couldn't, again, this, this came up from, this was brought to our attention by the town planner.
But is there any state requirement that says in order to be a manufacturer-
No, I think a modification means we still have it. It's sort of like, I guess I would use the equivalent, and my little understanding of this is like, if I have a change of usage on a liquor license, let's say I change the name of my restaurant, for example, I've done that before at other locations. I have to come and say, there's a change of usage from this name to that name.
Yeah, but I'm saying, let's say the state's cannabis commission says, in order for you to do this, you need to go to the community you want to do it in and obtain a special permit.
I don't, they don't say that.
They don't say-
They say approval.
Okay.
So we need to-
So it's open jurisdiction in reference to the necessary requirements of that approval then?
For cannabis usage, I mean, that's, that's the main thing is-
Well, so then I would, I, I, as one member, I would leave it up to Charlie and his team and whatever, because you're the one that's gonna be issuing the permits. You tell-
I believe it's a modification of the original special permit. And it was advertised.
There's no opposition.
Well, I would like to change, I would like to amend my motion, Mr. Chairman.
Would it be smart to make two motions?
Two motions?
One-
I can't issue a permit, special permit?
One with a modification and one-
I don't know if you could.
I don't either.
If it's not advertised that way?
Cause I don't know the answer to this.
It seems to me that, is the applicant okay with a modification?
I, I think we are, I think that's what, I mean, that's what the town planner expected me to do.
Kevin, do you have an opinion on this?
I think that the issue was a special permit in and of itself would be enough. It would technically constitute in and of itself a modification of, of the permit that already exists. So, uh, I think if it's advertised as a special permit, I think you can act on it as a special permit. If it hasn't been advertised, if it were a modification, I think the application would have had to be signed by the original owner of the permit technically, I suppose, uh, the owner of the building.
He's, I believe, he signed, he signed also, yeah, he had a sign.
He signed the application?
Oh, yes. He had to sign it also.
I'm of the opinion, you're the one that's issuing the bill and made, you're the one that's gonna take it down the road. If you tell us, I'm, as one member, I'm, I like to rely on you more than anything, uh, cause you're the one that's-
Originally, the ZBA was a special permit permitting authority. I think this should be a modification of the original special permit.
Then as, Mr. Chairman, if you'd like me to, I would like to modify my motion.
Doesn't work out, man, let's come back, I guess.
So where I am, so, um, I'd like to make a motion, well, so then I need to, is this the original special?
It's one of these.
I need the original special permit so I can refer to-
Are these the same, I don't know. It might be the same, or they're the same numbers. This one says case SF 85-03-010.
Yeah, SP. Is it SF or SP? I got SP. S pro, special one.
Yes, not good.
So let's see how this works. Please stop me at anyone if you choose to, if I'm doing something incorrect. Like to make a motion that we modify special permit 85-03-010 in the name of Kevin P. Andrade, trustee of Summerfield Realty Park. The modification is to allow the inclusion of a marijuana manufacturing facility at 800 Falmouth Road, Unit 101C, under table regulate, rule, use table regulations 174-2516 and 174-24K of the zoning bylaws in a zoning district of I-1, map 88 parcel 2, Mashpee, Mass. Again, owner of record, Kevin P. Andrade. And making the motion to modify the existing special permit. The board determines the applicant meets all the conditions of said modification under Section 48, Section 9. Uh, make specific reference to the site plan, Summerfield Park, scale 1 inch, 30 feet, dated February 26, 1985. All Cape survey consultants depicting location facility, Building C, Unit 101. Make specific reference to new floor plans, ResCon Community Architectural Inc., 118 Waterhouse Road, Bourne, Mass. Project 800 Falmouth Road, Unit C 101. Owner, CCE CAT LLC, 35 South Street, Mashpee, Mass. Date of issue, 8/26/19, drawn by MRH, checked by GBS. Drawing number A1 zero dot zero. New lower level floor plan, 200, 2,150 square feet. New first floor plan, 900 square feet. Existing floor plans, EX1 dot zero. It's conditioned on all town department comments written on the record, including but not limited to plan review comments correspondence dated October 3, 2019.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Stop.
The reference to the table of use regulations, 174-25E 16.
Okay, I, I will amend my motion to include that.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
All right.
Good one.
Thank you.
Don't blame us. Wow.
Okay. Stamp and sign? Okay.
It wasn't a legal position. There was a lot of opposition, so I think that's gonna have to be clarified, I don't even, nobody opposed it.
I agree.
Sign the correct line.
Correct line.
What restaurant is it?
Wicked.
I'm not sure I want to go there.
Catania Group.
Oh, what was it?
Yeah, they own a lot, well, at least they own a lot more, I think there's been what's around.
Oh, really?
Yeah. The one in Plymouth, now Covenant or-
Oh, yeah.
About three or four days ago, I took my, my sister-in-law to a pool. And I hit the duck.
That's good.
I also got duck.
Oh, jeez. I know, that's real.
You've had that?
Yes, I do. Have it on in a couple of years.
Scott? Oh, sorry.
So?
No, I didn't check my-
He didn't check his.
Sorry. I had a sound. Thank you.
Thank you.
Come back.
I'm with it.
Do you need another one of these? No. Are we all set? Okay. George, would you read the first other business?
31 Evergreen Circle, positioner Cape Cod Dog Center requests a minor modification to an approved special permit, SP dash 2,0018 dash 54. Board to vote if considered a major or minor modification.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for the record, Kevin Corain and I represent Cape Cod Dog Center, who is the applicant and the current owner of the facility that is under construction at 31 Evergreen Circle. The Dog Center was the recipient of a special permit from the zoning board of appeals. And you remember that, uh, that Kaylee and Adam Cullen, young couple, came in and presented this. They are operating a facility in Sandwich and they wanted to build their own building. They hired nationwide experts to come up with a, with a building and, uh, when it came time to, uh, to construct that building, it appears that the building, uh, as proposed and designed by the nationwide architects was far more expensive than, uh, than ever contemplated. Uh, and far more costly than a bank was willing to finance. So as a result, they've had to downscale, uh, their proposal. We're not creating any new zoning issues. The facility will still operate the same way it operated before. Uh, we are building a facility currently at 3,400 square feet, reduced from 4,000 square feet and it will be entirely within the footprint of the building that was approved by this board. So we're not creating any, any zoning setback issues or anything of that nature. There was a future expansion or a second phase that was originally contemplated. That was a 2,000 square foot, uh, future expansion. We've reduced that, uh, plan, if and when it ever occurs, to 1,200 square feet. And, uh, we've modified, uh, a bit, uh, the actual, uh, design of the building to the extent that the design that was originally presented had shown and things of that nature in the front of the building. It will still be a, a concrete and stick-built building, but now it will be primarily clabored. And we've made it more Cape Cod looking as opposed to the modern-looking design that was originally thought, uh, to be constructed on the site. Other than that, the interior of the building, obviously, the interior layout of the building has been changed somewhat due to the downsizing of the entire square footage. The interior design, however, really is not a subject matter for concern by the zoning board of appeals. And, uh, as I said, the use is not changing. So I suggest to the board that building this smaller building within the footprint of the previous building that was approved, would not require, uh, a major modification consideration in public hearing by the board. One other thing I would point out, that, uh, the rear parking lot, uh, was originally proposed to be paved. We are now going to put a gravel parking lot to the rear. However, all required parking, as the bylaw provides, required parking has to be paved. The required parking is in the front of the building, ten spaces that are required will be paved. But there will be that ancillary parking lot to the rear, which probably, if anything, would be used by employees, will be a gravel parking lot, uh, at this point. Other than that, I really don't have anything to the add, as I said, the origin, the, uh, I have plan, I have provided the board with plans, uh, which show the, uh, the, uh, change, uh, to the building and the size of the building. And I have Brian and Roy Katignani, uh, from Conserve Contractors, who are the contractors that are currently, uh, building, uh, the building and have, uh, taken the necessary steps to try to bring the project into something that could be financing, constructed within, within the means of the young couple that, uh, was proposing to build this, uh, build this building. So I had on Brian.
We have a lot, a lot of claim, uh-
On that plan? I don't think they-
Is there, is there a, is there a plan that depicts the old competitive?
Like an overlay?
Or is it just exactly the same footprint? It isn't.
It's smaller, smaller.
Exactly, so, is there, so does it, is there a plan?
Well, I have a plan.
I just want to see the difference between what we proved and what they're doing.
I'll show you.
How do you do that?
It's a printer.
Oh. My guy printed it already.
The previous building that was approved included that yellow.
Ah, thanks.
There you go.
It's quite a bit smaller.
So that's the new one?
Right.
The new one is right here.
It's shaded.
It's within.
So he's showing something that's different even than that, I believe. That's what he's showing. It's like an eight.
That's what it was.
That's what was approved.
This, this was the approved one.
Yeah, which is not that yellow.
Well, includes the front, this is the front of the building-
Yeah, but then it goes like this.
That's being eliminated.
It's still the same. This part is still the same.
Still the same.
I see.
But this is being eliminated. Like that was originally approved and it has been taken out of the plan now and the building has been reduced in size.
So that jog was there before in the front? Where jogs forward of that yellow line?
Yeah, this, even that, this is not that, but I guess.
Is the original approved?
I think that's the new one.
Because it's not that. That is not the original.
As I said, nothing changed, none of the setbacks or anything else changed.
The front, the front setback didn't change?
Front setback was plenty to begin with, so it didn't really make a difference.
Did any of the drainage slash water slash any of those other things change?
Not to mind all of the other, the fact that we had a gravel parking lot in the rear.
Parking.
Did this go through design review before?
It went through a design review initially, but as you're well aware, a design review is only a recommendation.
Right.
It's not a permit.
But they, but, but they also have, so either design review or site plan approval.
You're talking about plan review?
Exactly, I'm looking at, did Charlie have a look at this? I'm not trying to recreate the world.
Charlie looked at it. No question.
Cause there's a lot of drainage, et cetera, et cetera.
It still says 81, 81. I don't know what that dotted line is, but it says 81 feet, that says 81 feet. I'm not sure what that dotted line is.
See, I'm just looking at-
It's got that same dotted line, I'm not sure what that is. It might be a step.
Yeah, I'm just looking at, you know, all, uh, on-site work.
The board of health, the board of health has taken up, we were able to reduce the size of septic system. The board of health has already approved that reduction in size of septic system. If we ever have to come back, uh, for a phase two, the product, if phase two ever gets built, we'll have to go back to the board, to the board of health in order to get the, uh, the septic system approved.
This is the old stuff.
This, this is for your files, Kevin.
Fewer, uh, fewer canopse systems originally.
I, as one member, I don't think it's major.
I don't either.
I think it's minor.
And I said the use isn't changing, so it's essentially the same use.
Yeah, just a small building.
Same use, no small building.
I mean, were things approved before with-
We reorganized the interior of the building to make it, uh, work and to provide the space that was-
Were there any, I'm sorry, I'm- Were there any, I'm sorry to interrupt you off. Was there any other conditions before with like, you know, noise and other things that we have to address differently?
On the issue of drainage, the subsurface drainage was reduced due to the fact of the increased percolation, the gravel parking lot to the rear.
I just asked that question because when, when Charlie is issuing the occupancy, how do you, I don't know if you've seen this application.
We'll be happy to provide Charlie with the updated plans.
Because there's a lot of drainage, there's a lot of onsite earthwork that's going to happen. You pull in someone or do you get a certified list, a certified as-built or something from them?
Everything that was in the front of the building will still contain the same drainage.
Yeah, and I'm, and I'm okay with it. I'm not going to recreate the real.
The gravel parking lot to the rear is really the only, the only change in the.
I mean, I don't know.
The only changes I saw in the site plan was the gravel, although I think it was a gravel or asphalt, I forget. Play parking and the, 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 the pea garden. But I'm just saying that, you know, there's a lot of work there, so.
And I'm not trying to recreate the world. I think I'm okay with it. I just want to.
No, they have the same double fence that they had before, the play. A little different, but they have the two fences as was originally discussed.
If you're okay with it, I'm okay.
I wasn't here for this before. Does that make a difference if I should be voting on this? I wasn't present this last time.
All right, well.
This is to give you an idea of what the building.
Just letting you know I wasn't here for this. That's why I knew it was not just rang a bell. I just looked at.
More of the Cape Cod design with the clavboard as opposed to the stone treatment and the sort of odd roof that was in the common building, a shed type, but not shed, but I guess it was a shed.
You know, not like a bandmate.
Look at this one.
This is the old, this was the old roof line that was, that was approved. And this one is, this one is more consistent with the so-called Cape Cod Commission Guidelines as to what the location was.
Sorry.
I didn't, I didn't realize that there, there must be some pretty heavy bees.
We've got rid of the windows because we got rid of that space on the dog spaces in the rear.
Just, there's just so much site work there. It's just, wow.
That hasn't changed.
No.
The only difference that changed was the rear of the building because it's a gravel parking lot as opposed to.
So I presume that it didn't have to be like H twenty loaded or something because it's gravel and not asphalt?
That's a, that's a construction question.
Yeah, and I'm not going there. I'm, I'm okay.
Board of Health approved when it had to be done with the septic system.
Am I okay voting on this? I'm sorry? Am I okay voting on this if I wasn't present for the other one?
Can he vote on a modification if he wasn't here for the original? Why do you have to think there's many people that have that sit on boards that?
I think the answer is yes.
Were never on the original permit.
Yeah. I mean, it's not a special permit.
We just modified the other one and Andrea's, oh, none of us was here.
True. I just checked.
Right? Sorry, he already left.
Just checking.
Yeah. I mean, listen, that's the chairman's opinion, but I could.
I know that, that there had been some concern about noise, but I would point out that essentially the construction is, is not that much different than what was originally proposed. It's still a two-by-six frame construction, sixteen inches on center, half-inch exterior grade plywood. The old design had standard weather-resistant barrier. The new design has drainable air barrier. The old system had R twenty insulation. The new system has R thirty insulation. And the interior finish is a five-eighths inch drywall and it will continue to be a five-eighths inch drywall. So, and the professional opinion of my contractor consultants, the noise will be as readily protected as it was in the first instance.
And the chain link fence in the rear will also be noise resistant.
There will be noise outside, there will be noise outside because there will be dogs outside.
Exactly.
It's as simple as that.
Okay, I'm looking at the special permit that was approved last year. Kind of going through it. And of course, being a special permit, really concerned about one thing when it comes to dogs, it's the noise and the neighbors. So as I look through the decision, let's see, this says, "The building has a broad front to prevent parking noise from being heard in the front and also prevent the dogs from hearing vehicles that are driving in." Has that changed?
I can't comment on what the front, I'm not sure what that, what that means.
Okay, it also says there are two levels of fencing, so the animals cannot escape.
Fencing will remain the same.
Okay.
And as far as the neighbors are concerned, basically you have a self-storage warehouse adjacent to this property and you have other commercial or industrial uses adjacent to this property. So it's not as if this is sitting out over one-thirty and there are residential neighbors across the street. Most of the activity is commercial or industrial, so I don't see noise as being a primary issue.
Okay, Mr. Leonard said that the dog waste is controlled through the sanitary system. Has any of that changed?
Not to my knowledge. Board of Health has approved it, so.
Okay, this facility has a six-foot-high vinyl fence, an interior fence about three to four feet. Building also backs up against a storage facility. There is no one there most of the time. These dogs are never outside without a company, by staff, ever. There is only a small amount of dogs outside and it's controlled by the staff. The Simmons Facility is a Morton building where this building is not. This building will be designed to control any noise nuisance of any kind. Has any of that changed?
We don't think that the, the noise issue is, has changed. We believe that the new construction is equally adequate to reduce any potential for noise outside of the building. Other than noise that will occur when the dogs are in the play, play yards outside.
Okay. Also, there's typically twenty to forty dogs in each outdoor space at any given time. Each outdoor space is also linked to indoor space with easy access doors to be able to bring the dogs in and out immediately. Where they are currently are now, they do have budding neighbors that are very close, so it is a concern to keep the noise under control. They work on daily and are made aware of constantly. If there's a dog causing problems, they immediately bring the dog inside. Is that also your plan?
Yeah, the operation, the actual operation of this facility is not changing. They will operate the facility in the same fashion that they intended to operate it in the larger building. I would point out a couple of other things, that the only way, there will be no rig gate to the dog runs, dogs can now only exit through the building. And also that the overhead, there was overhead doors and additional windows, as you could see on the original design. It's our contention that the removal of the overhead doors and the removal of the windows will also serve as additional abatement of, of any noise that could travel beyond the, beyond the building.
Okay, so the building is what percent smaller? Thirty-three maybe? Ballpark twenty-five?
Well, thirty-four, thirty-four hundred square feet versus four thousand in Phase One. So it's six hundred square feet smaller. Phase Two, it's two, it's twelve hundred square feet versus two thousand square feet.
Twelve percent, whatever it is.
So it's eight hundred square feet if Phase Two ever gets built.
Okay, so I assume the amount of dogs that you're going to have there at one time will go down by fifteen percent?
I think the number of kennels, I think, are essentially the same or reduced. Originally, the septic system was designed for twenty-six kennels, but the, there's been a redesign of the system, which has, has been approved by the Board of Health, which only allows for eight kennels, given the existing Board of Health septic system that they have approved. So I suspect that some of the dogs are in, I think, cages. You know, there are dogs that can be in cages as opposed to the kennel. So I suspect that the number of dogs will be fewer, but I can't, I can't categorically state that.
Yeah, just what Roy Katignani from Conserve, I think the rooms in which the dogs are made are pretty much the same size. So in these, this is a daycare facility primarily. So the night care part is what Kevin's referring to, the kennels. The daycare part is dogs are running freely in these rooms attended by an attendant, by a professional attendant.
They're not in kennels.
So, so they run around, they play. That's the whole idea of this new business. They play and they are well cared for, they're fed, they're cleaned. So it's really an indoor facility for what is traditionally may have been in the outdoors. The back is still a play area for them, but they're monitored continuously and the space is the same. So the, the reason the building shrunk largely was cost-cutting, as mentioned, but corridors went away is what went away, corridors, things that really were sort of not affecting the dogs.
A waste of space.
But you were at twenty-four kennels.
Twenty-six, twenty-six.
The Board of Health is now saying eight.
That's right. The kennels is the measurement by which you design the septic system. That's really the key.
But, but there, so there must be some type of controlling factor, dog wires or something, in order to stay within that criteria.
That's right. There's only eight kennels instead of twenty-six.
So eight kennels, does that mean there are one kennel, one, two dogs per kennel, five?
One dog per kennel.
So there's eight dogs that can be utilized kennel-wise?
That's right. The rest are all free roaming in these large rooms.
That's overnight.
But don't they still, so from a Board of Health standpoint, and this, I just got to ask this question. Don't they still go to the bathroom?
Of course.
So if there's a hundred dogs there, why do you design a septic system for eight dogs?
Because that's the nature of the, of the method by which the Title V is designed and it's perfectly adequate. And in fact, you probably know your town doubles the size of Leaching. Over every other town.
I'm just unders, I'm just, did we not, did, I remember the question, because I was on the board, of how many dogs would be in this kennel, in this establishment?
So if it shrinks by fifteen percent, wouldn't the amount of dogs that you could potentially put in there, shouldn't that shrink too?
The amount of shrinkage is in the common areas, the human areas, not the dog areas.
So I guess it wouldn't.
Right.
Because you're not housing the dogs in the common areas. What, did we have some specific number in the original permit as to dogs, amount of dogs?
Hundred and twenty, I believe.
Is that the full extension?
It talks about the.
Hundred and sixty dogs permitted if it ever got, Phase Two got completed.
Typically twenty to forty dogs in each outdoor space is what I see. But, you know.
That's outdoor space. That's not the overall, that's just outdoor space.
Right. It says the hours of operation, seven AM to seven PM, seven days a week. Dogs are brought inside at seven PM. There will be no staff overnight. That's still the same?
Yes.
You say staff, no dogs overnight.
Staff.
Well, there's dogs, there's dogs. Yeah, they just don't have a night staff.
No staff.
They're there alone.
They're alone. But they're in kennels.
They're in a kennel. Just like any other boarding facility. So instead of twenty-eight kennels, twenty-six kennels, we only now have eight kennels. But dogs can, still can be retained or kept in crates, as was the case before.
Okay. Also, I guess the building does not require a stratus system, is that correct?
That's correct.
So if there was a fire there and the dogs were there and there was nobody there, that would be it, right?
That's right. But I guess I would add that there's intention to install a fire alarm and that, of course, would notify the fire department.
Yeah, you didn't vote on this one.
I didn't?
No. It was probably continued. Neither did Scott.
I remember the hearing.
It was Brad, Sharon, Jim, Bill, and me. Take a quick glance through that. Now, my only concern, of course, being a special permit, is the things that affect the special permit. The size? Not a problem. As long as it fits with, as we're talking about, the amount of dogs that can handle, can the sewer system handle it, all that stuff. Is that part of the special permit? Yeah, I guess it really is.
No, the septic system is approved by the Board of Health. That's outside the scope of the Zoning Board of Appeals.
But you didn't go, you haven't gone back to see them, have you?
Yes.
Yeah, so they had an amendment from twenty-four to eight.
System has been amended.
So they, they reduced the size of the system.
Yes, in fact, approved by the Board of Health itself.
Do we get a copy of that? See, I got no copy of that. I got no comment.
That's why my brain went, when they went from twenty-four to eight, they reduced the size of the system. And I'm sitting there going, a hundred and sixty dogs, which they still could have there. Where does that all go? I guess, and I'm not on the Board of Health, so.
It's the Board of Health determination, they determine.
I agree, so that's beyond our purview, but I, it just doesn't make sense to me, right?
Yeah, we did not get notification.
I can represent to you, based upon what Roy has represented to me, that they have been back to the Board of Appeals as a part of this redesign.
I believe you.
Charlie may be aware of it.
The Board of Appeals itself, not just the agent. The Board of Health itself voted to approve it.
I'm fine.
Anything?
I don't have them.
You want to see this?
Is this the original special permit? Want to see it?
I looked through it already.
We're voting on this? Okay. We'll have Jim vote on this.
Do we need two votes? One to number one, state that it's minor or major, and then secondly, if it's minor, we then vote on the minor? Meaning two motions?
I don't, I don't think so. Just one.
Typically, I think.
Just one motion, whether it's a major or minor modification.
We've submitted the plan so that the board has the revised plans for its file.
No, and there's, you know, there's, there's no reason that it's a major modification. I think that if they were going up in size and changing it dramatically. So I, you know, I, I believe it's a minor modification.
I agree.
Jim? Both Jim?
Yeah, I agree with that.
Ron?
I'm fine with that.
Old Jim and young Jim.
You want to make a motion?
Love to make a motion. Like to make a motion that we issue a minor modification to an already-approved special permit SP two zero one eight dash five four to Cape Cod Dog Center, thirty-one Evergreen Circle. The board has determined, in issuing the motion, the board is determined, or making the motion, the board has determined that the applicant meets all conditions for minor modification to a special permit under Mass. General Law Forty-Eight, Section Nine, site plan proposed, commercial development prepared by Cape Cod Dog Center, Lot Two, thirty-one Evergreen Circle, scale one inch, equals twenty feet, date October third, two thousand eighteen. Homes by Homes McGrath, run by LAC, checked by MBM, job number two one eight two five one, DWG number eight eight dash seven dash nine eight, sheet one of five revisions, eight twelve nineteen. Revised building layout, play yard areas, gravel parking rear, zoning notes, five seventeen nineteen, update table of content sheets, four, five sixteen nineteen, five six nineteen. Add wastewater utility shed, one seven nineteen, revised drainage basins, add temporary parking sites. Update, update pea garden, eleven fourteen eighteen, add roof overhang, update zoning notes, add six-foot chain link fence, ten nineteen eighteen. Add business sign and detail, ten ten eighteen, revise walkway concrete and concrete curbing. Conditioned also in all, in all town department comments read into the record.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, all.
He's kind of, just feel like they're. No, that's one more.
Is this the new one, the withdrawal?
This is the withdrawal, like.
My bad. There are the.
Here you go. Some of these. She needs this amount of. All right. Anything else to sign? Boy, a lot of paper tonight. All right, so let's see this, this, this.
I'll get this.
Who chopped down three trees tonight?
I don't know, do you want?
We chopped down three trees today.
Yeah, easily, easily.
We're on it. Okay. George, would you read the next other business?
Vote to approve the September eleventh, two thousand and nineteen meeting minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Vote to approve the two thousand and twenty-year public hearing schedule.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, additional topics, we have none. Let's see. Would you like to make a motion to pass?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hey, good night.
Do we? We can't shut them off.
Right.
You can just silence them. The what? I never got anything to sign, that last one. The dog, the dog one? Do we, we supposed to sign, as I said, do we?
Yeah, shut it down.
Yeah, shut down and went back.
No, you didn't. For the dog place, we never got that. It didn't came to us. No, I said that, I said we're supposed to sign anything.
Well, maybe a good spot for it.